I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation with God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope everyone is comfortable with our candlelit environment here. We should go fairly quickly into presentation and it's actually level four, did you do also? Okay, are there any changes due to the Moving on to item four, this is open forum where we give any of our residents an opportunity to ask questions or to comment. So if any of you would like to discuss with us, yes?
I would just like to say that because the fans are running in the background, there's ambient noise in the recording of tonight's meetings. So if you could speak above that noise, the recording will be better.
Thank you.
They turned these two off.
Okay, that's better off.
Yeah, I can't hear over them.
I just don't think they help that much. I've spent a lot of hours in this room and the fans don't do much. Joe has a fan tied to a real air conditioner, but not tonight.
It's
Okay, well, moving on. Did you have something officially wanted to talk about?
My name is Pat Love and I've lived in this community for thirty-five, forty years. I have a son who went to school here and have a granddaughter who attends the middle school. And she's been involved in Bugsy Malone and other plays and music at the school. And just as a parent, a grandparent, who raises her, I went to Bugsy Malone and some of the meetings with Danny Truput and the other people involved. And I became aware, as did the other people who were there, who I don't really come at all, that there was real concern over funding for the music program and specifically for the drama program and musicals in the middle school. And all I know is what I heard at that meeting. But they indicated that when it comes to doing a musical or a drama, I guess, it's offered to a middle school teacher first. And if the teachers decline, then it's put out for bid. And I think what I was told is that they pay three percent of a beginning teacher's salary to the person who takes that position. And Danny Truput took it and then he had a choreographer and also an accompanist with him. And he spent multiple hours in the school with the kids. And there were forty-plus kids and I don't know if any of you saw it, but it was really a remarkable performance. Apparently, he's okay for this year. They did a GoFundMe. Paige and Ray were able to raise some funds to help him and the other people involved. But in looking ahead to the next year, we were hoping that we could somehow increase the compensation that goes towards the people who work on putting the play together. Because it really takes a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of parents. Like I said, there were forty-plus kids and I was put down as a kid herder, I think was what I Why I'm getting too old for that. But that's what I'm here for, just to ask that the board, and I think Jane indicated to me that may not all be your responsibility, but if the board could be supportive and if people want to give me direction, I'm glad to move on and try to find a way to get more money in the budget for a drama department and musicals in the future. I know they needed like microphones and all those kinds of things and really had to work, thank goodness there were volunteers, but on a very tight budget. So that's what I want to say. Thank you.
So Jane, so will you direct Kim and myself to get back to Pat within response and CC the board so we all know where we're at?
Yeah, Pat and I had a conversation yesterday and sort of outlined some of the difficulties of the vote. Really is that it's a club, so therefore it's self-financing. But at the same time, I appreciate that. I personally appreciate the fact of having that kind of support for drama in Truensburg. But we will. Let us do some thinking.
So we'll take that direction from Jane and we'll get back to you in an email and we'll outline what that process is.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
And the limitations that we have.
Okay, and then if you have any referrals on who you think I should talk with, then I'll try to get the information back to some of the other people who are in my meeting.
Thank you for coming up.
Right, you had also mentioned you were interested in pursuing some grants, too.
Yeah, I have a friend, Debbie Dalvan. Her last name is Bell now. And I know in the past that she's been part of a grant for the conservatory and also for the low-day library. And I'm willing to go on and ask her about that, but I really, at this point, don't feel like I have enough information. I've never written a grant. I have no idea what goes on, but I'm willing to pursue it, but I feel like I need some direction.
Good, well, thank you. Give us some time and we will definitely get back to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, I've been sabotaged by my computer who decided to die. Okay. Okay, any other comments or questions? Then we can move on to, we have any agenda changes? Then let's move directly to the presentation. First one would be
Yeah, I'm telling you, Gary, as we entered the meeting this evening, it's amazing in our world how yesterday's news at ten o'clock is like, okay, well, yeah, you know, we've all moved on, everybody knows, but I wanted to officially and publicly acknowledge the success of our budget vote and the various propositions and thank our community. It is amazing how the Truensburg community continues to support our school district. So a big thank you there and I wanted to introduce our two new board members, elect. Will be sworn into office on July tenth, Diane Lee and Joanna Ains.
Congratulations.
So again, thanks to our community. The very positive support.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept? Second, all in favor? Any votes, extensions, or all in favor? Now, moving on to technology. I understand we have Mr. Perkins to get us up to
Thanks for having me. So I, we probably got the slides. There's quite a lot there to look at. And I made a slight change to the slides because I realized I omitted a few classes, so we'll see who else will come on. So I'm Jim Perkins. I teach technology at the high school. My counterpart is Eric Yetrue with the middle school. As soon as this computer starts up, we'll be good. So I will start with Mr. Yetrue's slideshow because he is in Washington DC, a long places. And if you're not familiar, technology in the middle school is a forty-week curriculum. It's divided currently at ten weeks per grade level. And Eric has deliberately arranged the sort of course of study into themes. So his first, the fifth grade, being a lower skill, eighth level, do aviation and flight. So they begin with Delta paper airplanes, proceed to Delta Darts, and I think they also do hot air balloons. And believe they finish it with everybody's favorite, the rockets, which occasionally land on where they should. And I think what you're looking at here is some of the action and the instruction of Delta Darts. And that is a ten-week course and that's fifth grade level, so they're not manually very sophisticated. Moves on to sixth-grade technology, which centers on bridges, which is a very popular course of study for sixth-grade technology, those of you who are familiar with it. But essentially, they design and construct Warren truss and various truss-type of bridges to basically understand stresses and so forth. And it's actually a pretty interesting project because it culminates in the bridge test, which is each bridge is essentially subjected to a load, which is essentially weights that are suspended below the bridge to test its actual load-carrying capacity. And you can see some links to the New York State standards here, too. Seventh-grade technology moves along to how people use technology to solve problems, systems and subsystems in technology, how technology affects people in the environment, choosing appropriate resources and so forth. And this is, it's actually a very fascinating course of study because I, when I first came to Truensburg, I actually taught technology at the seventh and eighth grade level. And it's a really interesting grade-level teach. But it's an interesting course of study. So essentially what they do is they learn control systems. So they learn to make a very simple control into a secret box and learn electronics along the way. They learn how to solder and do some other electronic study. And they learn problem-solving, safety, circuitry, electronic circuitry, and do some woodworking and power machinery along the way. Last but certainly not least is eighth grade. And they are typically working into transportation, but they also do archi, excuse me. I went to So they do some architectural floor planning. They do a maglev vehicle, which is essentially magnets and a motor, a propeller attached. They also do a mousetrap-powered vehicle, which is a very interesting project. And you get a lot of students who are really excited about that when they get to high school. And typically, the approach kids take with that is they go for speed or they go for distance. There's really not a lot of in-between. You've got to make your mind up. And that's essentially a great technology. Anything that you'd like to ask me on the technology offerings? Okay, and then also Eric has been involved with the Mokabor program, which I know you are all familiar with. And he's been providing a lot of support and not only classroom support, but also sort of knowledge support in supporting the Mokabor program. Building birdhouses, compost bins, milling, grinding grain, building pineer boxes and doing garden work in the hoop house. And that's a great population of people as well. He really enjoys it. And it's a great program, I would guess.
That's a lot of progress since that was their ground year. It's become a teaching station.
So, now that's middle school. So prepare with me, although the high school.
How do we get a tour of the hoop house?
Sneak out of the middle school campus. Actually, I think Eric would probably help, and I know Melissa Bryant would as well.
Michelle, if you reach out to me, I can
Thanks for the more official answer. So this is a technol, we will discuss technology education at the high school level, which is pretty broad. And I believe you've seen all of sort of the bullet points of that curriculum. We start off in ninth grade basically with drawing and design for production, which also gets students to SUNY college credits through TC3 in the Contour enrollment. And they receive credit in drafting 107. And essentially, DDP is an introduction to engineering. So it's a problem-solving-based process. It's learning how to visually represent ideas and solve problems, sharing those problems with other people. That's the communication and the things. And then learning the tools and machinery to do it along the way. And of course, most of you know that there's a woodshop, which is a primary production studio at this point. Or we do have a couple of 3D printers along the way, which are a lot of fun to prototype with. And that also, it's left off of there, but it also gives students the high school, excuse me, the freshman level, excuse me, high school credit in art and drawing. Next year is a one-half credit class that I'm hoping to premiere for next year. We have quite a few interested students and it's basically a maker class. So students will be learning a wide range of technologies, screen printing, laser printing, laser cutting, computer-controlled machining, graphic design, desktop publishing, woodworking, video and so forth. So it's an interesting way to connect the brains with the hand. After DDP comes product design and engineering, and that's focused on product and industrial designs. They go a lot deeper than DDP. They go further into CAD and 3D virtual modeling. They do a lot of pre-engineering and engineering-type of coursework and it's a really interesting class. That I have offered both as a semester and as a year-long class. And currently, because I'm only one person, we've scaled it back into a half, a half credit, one semester class. And you'll see, of course, some images that go along with this. CAD I also gives students two SUNY credits from TC3. And they basically learn engineering graphics. So they, excuse me, they learn introduction to CAD, which basically is drafting parts on the computer and sharing those parts with other people, creating assemblies, showing engineering-style drafting drawings and so forth. And along the way, they prepare to, they get to know 3D printing and lecture laser cutting, CNC machining as well. CAD II launches them into a more divergent approach to their studies and they marry other subject areas into their designs. They receive more open-ended designs of product design and engineering problems along the way. And for instance, currently, they're working on a energy drink problem, which they have to design a multiple-piece energy drink container, which holds five hundred milliliters. And they have to create a presentation and basically pitch their ideas along the way. So it's a good way to marry in some volumetric calculations work in the worldwide measurement system called the metric system. And it's a really enjoyable class. It uses some interesting stuff. So you'll see some of that in a minute. Electricity electronics, basically electricity electronic class. They learn some theory, which is important. They do some practice along the way. And that's also a lot of fun. Woodworking is popular because we have a woodworking studio and I have some experience in it. So we do some woodworking things along the way. And you folks, I think, are familiar with some of what has come out of that studio. But they can basically pursue it in a sequential possibility as their use progresses during high school. Dormant offerings are ones that are just not offered because there are not really, there's not enough staffing. We have digital electronics and robotics, which is a one, it also gets two, four, four separate classes. And they learn essentially, digital is the language of computers. So they learn how to create computer systems along the way and learn basically a process of that, learning logic and so forth. And they build a lot of, do a lot of breadboarding and kit work along the way. TVD production is another dormant class. Whoops, that's on there twice. Architecture one and two. Again, you guys think I've seen all of these things, folks. And these are currently offered. So there's some visuals for DDP, which is basically learning to use drafting software, creating three-dimensional objects, recording the information engineering-wise, learning the language of engineers and technicians. They learn how to represent objects in perspective by hand. They can also present objects in perspective with their computer-generated models. They create a three-dimensional wooden block called Soma Cube. And traditionally, it's been done in wood. However, you can produce them in 3D prints as well. That's the 3D printer. That's one of our 3D printers, excuse me, that's currently functioning. You have to see it in, you have to see it operating if it can indulge you. Because it's kind of hypnotic. Let me go back here. That's Jezza. See if I can get this. Might have been launched before, didn't it? Well, it's not going to launch.
Try clicking on the link. It's going to be active.
Say that again?
Click on the link. The words are low.
No, that's okay. Anyway, the 3D printer offers students to do rapid prototyping. And 3D printing is not a manufacturing process, however, it does allow a student to immediately show off what they're working on. Actually, you have some 3D printed projects that are up here and you guys can have a look at them. That's well in the dark right there.
So Jim, how does that work? Does it scan the drafted image and then it, so it takes it from the drawing?
Yes, it takes it from the drawing. Essentially, you take the model that you create, so the students create the, all of the parts. So they create, in this case, the stool. And then they transfer those types of files into the language that the 3D printing software uses. 3D printing software sends it to the 3D printer. And the 3D printer works on X, Y, and Z process, so it basically lays out X and Y and then works its way up step by step. So it's called an additive manufacturing process. And what the kids have been working on recently, I'll pass it on to Gary. There are different examples of stuff in here, but what I wanted you to see, which is all the rage these days, that everybody complains about as well, depending on how old they are. The fidget spinner. So these are two that actually came off of the printer today. That one's not completed. It just has the center one in it. That was just done by Elijah Flood this morning. And this was done by Kevin Emery. But these are a lot of fun. And of course, it really gets kids engaged in that, in that hands-on aspect. So DDP is basically, you know, it's pre-engineering. And also because we have the woodshop, we're able to also produce a lot of what we do in wood. So they essentially go through the construction of it virtually. They show engineering-style drawings of what they create. They use the, basically, international standards of their drawings engineering-wise. And then they also produce them. So here's Jezza with the scale, excuse me, the presentation-style drawing of her stool and the actual stool itself. And of course, at Christmas time, we partner with the Arch Department and also the Christmas Bureau. And we produce, while we produce thousands of toys over the years, but essentially, we produce wooden toys to give to the Christmas Bureau at Christmas time. And the Christmas Bureau, as you know, is a charity, local charity, who has students. And some of our students, some of them are below school age, who won't typically get toys for Christmas. So we provide them with more traditional, old-fashioned wooden-style toys, but not necessarily limited to that. And you're seeing some of the products of that process here, too. And it's a really, it's a really cool thing because kids at that age, they really begin to kind of fiddle with the idea of charity and giving. And I think that's an enjoyable process for them to embark on. There are more toys. Now, here's an interesting story. These two kids who are currently ninth graders see a gorilla-shaped rocker. We call it the Harambe locker rocker. I'm not sure if that's appropriate or not, but Harambe was the gorilla that was shot in the zoo. With the child in the same. It's a bad joke. Anyway, let's call it. Sorry, I'm sorry if I used that. That's the, that's what we call it. Anyway, they saw this online. They didn't actually have the plans. All they had was this image. And we, well, we, they, some of my buddies, they took the image, broke it down into dimensional drawings and actually produced the rocker. This, which you've seen here, has not entirely finished yet. Here, you can see it's doesn't have the finish on it. The seat's not yet installed, but they couldn't really hold themselves any longer as far as taking a look at what they had created. So we snapped the shot and went down. Anyway, it's a pretty cool process. And there's some lucky kid in the Truensburg community right now who is really enjoying that rocker. And that's a labor of luck. And as you can see, the rocker is also between Jane and Gary over there. So we actually prototyped it and 3D printed it and assembled it so they could take a look at it. Prove it designed before you actually go through the process. That's engineering, that's product design, that's industrial design. At the end, this time of year, they get a chance to do what they want to do. So they come up with designs, sketches, designs, and they produce, well, lots of different types of projects. In this case, guitar body, that's called guitar body. Ben made a nice dog station, dog eating and drinking station. That's a big dog there, by the way. This is an old Garrett Wrightville's design. Can you guys see that? Who walked into the district office? This is some kind of club device here for hitting balls. And Catherine, last year, did this really awesome lamp. And now, remind you, none of these, none of these had plans. So these students spent six weeks devising, understanding, working out all of the issues to be able to actually create those designs. So that's, it's a testament to the amount of devotion that they put into the process. Here's a few more. Tongue drum, excuse me, a tongue drum at the top. That's basically a drum device, obviously, by the name. Creates interesting tones. Logan did a little sound amplifier for his iPad or his iPhone or whatever that is last year. Magnify, amplifies the sound essentially, channels the sound from the speakers, sends it out into the general universe. And of course, Sophie did a really nice music box here. And that's a music box that you wind through and it has roll like a player piano. So it basically plays the tunes out of the truck. Take advantage of the woodshop and it's fairly popular, so we do woodworking. And we've done bowls, stacked laminated bowls as an initial project. And we started with an initial project like that finger-jointed box there. And in this case, Noah, as his culminating first marketing period, first semester project, created a shadow box for his medals and trophies. Because if you know Noah, you know he is good on his feet. So he wanted the opportunity to show off what he's done. And I think that the way he's going, he's going to have to build another one for next year. There's more projects. And there's that same box, in this case, added shelving and so forth there. I'm not anticipating, of course, that students will end up being woodworkers. However, they do go through the engineering process. They do learn the language of mechanical engineers along the way, which is an important process. And there's your Harambe rocker again. Some of my product design and engineering students have a few spare moments and I asked them to actually generate that product. As you see, there's the engineering, or there's the 3D printer printing out a product, something that, what's going around here. These are, these are essentially meant to be hangers for backpacks and coats. So essentially, this is what gets attached to a wall. And this is a prototype, so this is, this is product, this is industrial design. And that's because you can, all you got to do is draft it and then the 3D printer will print it for you, hopefully. 3D printers are a little bit persnickety and I know I spend my share of time keeping them running. Product design, engineering, more stuff. And I think if you wander into Terry Welch's office, you'll see a clock theory similar to that. Next year, make, we're getting into multiple areas, hopefully, definitely, excuse me. Screen printing, which is popular. Then we do, we're building electronic robots. Of course, everybody's favorite, the fidget spinners. And we will have a laser cutter, which will be able to augment what we do graphically. So that'll be pretty interesting. Now we progress into CAD. And of course, we create parts and then we create assemblies with them. So these are assembly parts. We put those parts together, we create an assembly. That's mechanical engineering. Evan here, as his first two-week project, created a 3D printable vase. So he has a scale version over there. Take a little bit further. Now an engineer at, name fails me. It's a New York State school. It's in New York State. Devin DeMarco, do you know where he is? Do you know where Devin is?
Is it Clarkson, Dan Clarkson?
Clarkson, thank you. So Devin's at Clarkson, Brazilian mechanical engineering. And part of his culminating project last year was to create this 3D, this mechanical hand and 3D print it. And of course, he never let me get a picture of it before he brought it home, but he created that. And that's a pretty sophisticated project for a high school, see. And that's a pretty sophisticated project for a high school senior. Logan made another, another phone stand, 3D printed at hand, I think you can see it there, however, it's not ready to show it. Ren was a real slacker, and she is a freshman who took my CAD class, and she created this, this glow-in-the-dark dragon. I don't think I have an image of it glowing in the dark, but it glows in the dark, and she made it as an assembly of parts. So you can see here that as part of the mechanical engineering product design process, she is showing the, she's showing the breakup, break apart of how it all assembled together. Next project, design your own chessboard, understanding history, understanding, understanding the hierarchy, understanding you have to communicate what those particular players do. The slacker, Ren, did musical notes, and at the end of it, she critiqued, we critiqued all of their designs, and essentially, somebody asked her, well, why is the pawn, why is the eighth note a pawn? And she, cool as cucumber, said, because the eighth note is the most significant of all the musical notes out there. So, yeah, she's a real slacker. Anyway, so she has a rationale for all, why all these players are those players. It's a fun project.
What have they made out of it, Jim?
Um, the 3D printed products, oh, yeah, they, they're, that's, that's a lot of work to 3D print all those, but we, that's how, that's what we do. So Ren is currently 3D printing those. The set, the primary plastic that we use is polylactic acid, it's an organic plastic, so it's basically cellulose and some other vegetable products. And the nice thing about PLA is it works, it's a gasless and odorless, safe plastic. So essentially, it will print without sticking the place up and giving you cancer. Once we, once we have that equipment.
perspective, that takes a year.
And it's also, it's a great, it's a great, it's a great product, but there are other awesome printing filaments out there. PLA is sort of a beginner's printing filament, and there are, now, the technology has gone to the point where that material is done to haywire, so we, I, I skate thirty bucks together, go on Amazon and get another a little bit more, and we proceed on and try different filaments. But of course, Rory, you can see here, created his glow-in-the-dark, it's fun. Mitch did a really cool, he wanted to do a buffalo head, we talked about how to do it. Software's not necessarily medical, medical-style CAD software, however, he did sort of build up this buffalo head and 3D printed it, and it's actually, I believe, in that box, and it's actually a pretty cool, it's a pretty cool process, and if you know Mitch Dunmond, he made it as fun as possible. And we keep moving along here, electricity, electronics, currently teaching that right now, they learn how to do testing of circuits, understand circuit design, the preliminaries of electronics engineering. You can see a breadboard up here with parts plugged in, essentially the common function, and here you're seeing an operating robot, and of course, here you're seeing the test, basically the test breadboard that we use anywhere. And digital, which I said is not, is a dormant style plastic, they learn the language of computers, basically. And if you've taken a look at the, if you take a look at the Bureau of Labor Statistics, you'll see, you know, what kind of jobs are out there, and they're in computer, they're in engineering, and they're in business. That's what we're preparing, trying to prepare kids for these days. And they're also in technical fields as well. So I think it's a really important curriculum, and I try to deliver as much of that as possible.
That's great, love all the pictures.
Yeah, thanks. If it's not pictures.
So, so a couple of questions, there were a lot of dormant classes.
Yes.
So is that sort of the chicken and egg deal? We don't have enough kids, or we don't have enough teachers? If we had more teachers, we'd have more, we have a finite number of students, so.
Absolutely, and I think that that's always the rub, Gary, is that you have a limited number of students, you have a lot of awesome offerings.
Yeah.
And, and I mean, I don't mean just in technology, I mean across the high school. And if you try to divide eighty kids into nine periods over four years' worth of time, and also, you know, some of your music classes, you know, as pullouts as they are right now, you're still, you still are, you know, there's still a lot of, you know, there's not a lot of students who are really interested in, in things, they get, they're pulled in a lot of different directions. So some of the dormant classes are more traditional state curriculum classes, and what I've done is wrap some of those curriculums into what my existing. There are some like digital electronics, which I think should be offered, because it's basically the beginning part of digital, of electrical engineering career, certainly a great technical trade. Technicians, two-year technician in digital can graduate and make eighty thousand dollars a year.
And as you're well aware, the STEM program has been a big part of the capital project discussion. So just from your perspective as a classroom teacher, not taking into the budget constraints, et cetera, et cetera, ideally, what would you like to see in the high school?
Candidly, in front of you all, I think that I'm, I'm most interested in revamping the technology space, so it has multiple possibilities, production, design areas, storage areas, and a CAD area as well, if I didn't say that. Because you can't house that all in a STEM space, a large open space, for a couple of different reasons. It's noisy, it's, it's auditorium-like, a large space, so if you keep things more compartmentalized, which is always my philosophy, I think, like in my case, I'm most interested in having that, that space there revamped and ready for the kind of curriculum that's necessary these days.
Is that space, existing space, large enough, or that, that space?
It's very large.
Okay.
I would take you on a smell tour of my CAD lab right now, it's packed, it has a lot of freshman-level students in it, and it, of course, it's air-conditioned, and it gets, it gets a particular funk. It's a small space, we can fit twenty computers in it, and twenty computers is tough, it's a very tight space, it's half of the size of this room.
Jim and I have spent a lot of time, I'll tag on in this and say, we've spent a lot of time looking at ideas for what we would do if we could create the perfect classroom, and, you know, creating a production space, a fabrication space, a lab space. And we've kind of mapped out some ideas, but a lot of it is equipment, because we can create the space, but then it's the next layer of, you know, the 3D printers that we have are really nice, but they're, they're finicky, and they're sort of lesser expensive models, and so Jim uses a lot of.
It's hard to finicky.
Jim spends a lot of his prep time fixing 3D printers and cleaning up.
Oh, he's got some prep time.
And his evenings and weekends. But, you know, to invest in sort of higher-end 3D printers, and then the mill, and then the plasma cutter, and so we've got, we've sketched out and looked at a couple of different options that we, I know, I would love to see created within the context of our existing space. I think Jim's right on that, you know, the STEM space is a whole nother conversation, but what he's teaching, that space is utilized, and those areas that he's in right now, there is constant. You know, Jim has, he teaches six periods, he has lab period, he has his prep and his lunch, and I would tell you that nine out of nine periods, there's kids in that room.
Which shows you how often I take lunch.
Right. So it is, it's, it is a very popular space, and it is a very busy space, and the only downside that we have, one of the downsides we have right now, is that it is, it's so small and cramped. So what happens is, we've got twenty computer stations, but we cap a class at eighteen, because you know that.
Which is usually a computer that's.
There's gonna be one computer down, and in order to be able to guarantee that all eighteen students are fully engaged every class period, we cap it at eighteen. You can't, you just can't put more kids in there. Otherwise, you have kids sitting on the table on the side watching their friends do the classroom.
So it's space, but secondarily, it'll be equipment, which technically is not in the capital project aspect.
Uh, I think that's, can be.
Can be?
Yeah.
You know, and to speak to the 3D printer issue that you raised, John, I don't want to, you know, be indulgent. The 3D printers are great, because these 3D printers, at least you can work on them. You can buy some 3D printers that are packaged, pull them out, plug them in, and they will print for you, but when they stop printing for you, they stop printing for you, because you can't get inside them, it's like working on your Macintosh computer or pulling something apart, it's not, it's like working on a 2017 vehicle. It's impossible to change oil these days on a loan. So it's not, it's not meant to be messed with.
Right.
By amateurs, and I'm somewhere between amateur and professional with them at this point, so the nice thing about 3D printers is you can, students can at least learn that process, and they do learn it, because you can literally pull them apart, and you have to replace filaments, and you have to tweak them a lot, clean them, be nice to them, clean the heads on them and tell them that they're doing so forth. So it's a double-edged sword with 3D printers, specifically as a technology. Great technology, because you can prototype immediately.
Right.
They're used, interesting why, because they create jigs and fixtures for machines and tools, they're prototyping. My friend Jesse Hill came in and did industrial design last year, presentation, uses them to pitch ideas for DeWalt drills and so forth, so they're, you know, they're, they're not a toy, they're, they're not a manufacturing device either, but they, they help prototype and they help jig and create ideas and create fixtures.
Thank you.
Have you looked at other spaces in other schools?
Yes.
I know that Camden, for example, has an amazing dungeon.
Yeah, Camden's a great school for technology.
Oh, it is, it's just.
Harley does a really great job there.
He does, and they get, they get machines just from local companies, who, you know, they go through them quite quickly.
I think, Douglas, in that case, honestly, the reality is, is you don't, I don't think you have the volume of kids taking EP classes. So I think you have kids who are more technically applying, not only in the population there, but, you know.
Well, Harley also did draws.
I have to be careful what I say, but it's a different population, it's a rural population, but it's adjacent to, you know.
A lot of manufacturing.
Yeah, a lot of manufacturing. I came from Corning Post twenty-five, twenty-three years ago, and that's, that's an industrial, that's an industrial city, and that has facilities which are, you know, were, at that time, were similar, and offered, you know, had that opportunity. There's no, under no illusion that it was gonna be perfect when I came here. It would be nice, it would be nice to move forward, because I think it's an underserved curriculum in a lot of ways.
And an employment area.
Yes.
Well, it's certainly, I mean, I was, I would check in every now and then, because we talked about it at a coordinators meeting or something, I'd drop in, and what are the jobs, what are we preparing kids for? You know, business and computer technology, engineering, technical trades. Average age of a plumber these days is fifty-seven, and it's not like you don't need plumbing. So, you know, and I think I spoke a lot more to, you know, basically to, you know, advancing students into computer, into university of tech, I'll study, but we also serve a huge piece of the bosies crowd as well. And just talking to a student who's going into welding next year, you know, he has to do orthographic drawings, and he has to do engineering-style drawings, and I'm like, you have, and these, he's like, I'm so glad that you showed me how to do these, because we, you need these. It's not, it's not a dead art, it's not, it's very relevant in a lot of different trades.
Good question, you had mentioned that the computer-aided design and drawing.
Yes.
Is a half of a high school credit?
Yes.
But it gets two SUNY college credits.
Gets two SUNY college credits, yeah.
Wow, okay. I thought maybe you had to take both in order to get two credits.
The way I have, the way I wrapped that curriculum into TC3's curriculum into that is it's all taken care of in that first semester. And it's actually done, having visited the program and so forth there, the kids get it times two here with, you know, with what they're getting, so.
Clever man.
Well, it's not my first rodeo, so, yeah. But, yeah, so anyway, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks for listening. Okay, here it is.
Oh, yeah.
What was the sound? Where do you need the sound? It's a, it's a hum, it's a very. I tell my students that it's aliens talking to us. It's a hypnotic sound, but you can see that it builds from down below on a build plate and works its way up, and it works with a, with a build plate that moves and with a printing head that moves simultaneously.
So that would make the dimensions pretty exact.
It has a resolution of point three five millimeters, so it's not perfect, there are better resolutions out there, there are also longer build times as a result of that. Printing most anything is at least an hour. A lot of students start printing something, and I look to see how long it's printing, and it's a nine-hour print, so I usually stick around to make sure that the print doesn't fall along the way, but it's a, it's a, as long as it's the size of a skull or smaller, you can fit it on that build plate perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're with Karen Bill.
Thanks, Jim. Can you click on that for me, Jim?
Absolutely. Would you like the?
Yes, press off the clicker.
For lack of a better term?
I know. I know, it does, doesn't it? Thank you. My name is Karen Murray, and I teach business here at the high school, grades nine through twelve. These are just some pictures in my college computer applications class, which I'll be talking about here in a minute, we do with spreadsheets, we do an M and M project, and, you know, sort them and put the data in the spreadsheet, manipulate the data, and all that good stuff. So this is, this is the presentation, at least some of it, that I show the eighth graders before they are making their schedule to come over to the high school, basically going through the different courses that, that I teach. So the MAE course, and you see at the bottom, suggested for freshmen, is keyboarding for computers. It's a full-year class, it is concurrent enrollment with TC3, it's one college credit, basically developing the correct keyboarding skill, the old-fashioned way, using, we use Word, and we also use an online program called edutyping for the speed and accuracy part of it. And as, in all my classes, I incorporate the time management, the organizational skills, that kind of stuff, all kind of in a lot of different ways, sometimes they don't even know that they're doing it, and, you know, I'll draw it to their attention and say, you know, so that they understand. But that is, what we suggest for freshmen, I do have seniors in that class, I, you know, it can vary, I have a couple of seniors in, in a keyboarding class, so if they decide at the last minute they want to take it, they can do that. This is the college computer applications course I was talking about. This is, I teach as a full-year course, concurrent enrollment with TC3, this is four college credits, this is four one-credit courses at TC3 that I have put together for one full-year course. Word processing, database, spreadsheet, and presentation software are in this class, and it's a, it's a great class for preparation for college or the workplace. Most colleges or universities require that students have some sort of a computer class with this background, so a lot of the credits do, the colleges will accept the credits for, for this class. They get a little bit of a taste of, of all those things. The word processing with, and of course, we use Office 2013 at this point, and with databases, spreadsheets, PowerPoint access, which isn't really popular, but, you know, they do get a little bit of that as well. So again, that's, that's a four-college-credit class. Personal money management, it's kind of interesting from the question that was raised. I teach this as a half-year class and it is three college credits. We jam-pack a bunch of stuff in this class. Basically, you know, how to manage your personal and financial resources. Everything that I use to teach this class, all free materials. You know, Tompkins Trust Company, we do a checking account packet simulation, you know. I know most of, most of the, our bank accounts and checking accounts are all online, but, you know, just like when I'm going to talk with accounting too, you got to know how to do the basics. You got to understand, you know, that, that you're adding deposits and deducting the checks that you're writing and, and go through that process. All kinds of things. We talk about credit, we talk about savings accounts. Quite a few years ago, I had a student who, she was taking the class, I think she was a senior, and she shared with the class that she, I think it was a year or a year and a half previous, had gotten a credit card, had just taken that credit card and just went out and to the max. So she had a job and every penny of that job was going to pay off this credit card that she had, you know, and here she is, still in high school, you know, and she was, you know, so I use that as an example and try to explain to them the situation. And it is surprising how many students really don't understand when, when we're talking about money and, and the different types of accounts and, and of course we talk about retirement accounts, we talk about just all kinds of things in here. So again, it's, it's a three-college credit class, but we, again, pack a lot of, a lot of stuff into, into that class.
Is this an elective class?
These are all electives. They're all electives.
Everything that Karen teaches is an elective.
Everything I teach is an elective.
That sounds like it should be required.
Oh, Karen and I have talked many times about the fact that college computer applications and personal money management are courses that every, like it's
Yeah, really.
like personal health. These are things that every kid should have the opportunity.
I've been here
Don't be for their own safety.
Right.
I don't know, how long have I been here? Thirty-four years.
Who am I truly?
And over, and over the years, I have tried to get some of these courses required for some of these kids because, you know, they just, they don't have that information. And, you know, some will come back and say, oh, I wish I took this, or I'm so glad that I took this.
Yeah, but that kind of night train can really have
Oh, absolutely.
For a long time, I should say.
Absolutely, absolutely, yep. No, no question. College accounting, full-year course, four college credits. I basically, the last few years, have just done an independent study. I don't have a full class, which unfortunately, you know, I see students who are going into business, that are graduating, that are going into business, and, you know, they're not getting this, unfortunately. And again, it's that, it's, you know, there's a lot of courses we offer here and it's hard for them to, to take everything, but I basically do this independently. So it, and it's not an easy course, for those of you that may have had it in college. So just, you know, and the colleges may not accept the credits, but at least they would have a taste of, of the course and accounting and how it works. And it is, it's all the book accounting because again, you need to, you need to understand all the accounting concepts. We don't do much at all, you know, online accounting because they have to learn the basics. College and career prep, INVEST is, I guess I'll use Jim's term, is dormant. This has been taught for a few years. I think when our, the total enrollment kind of declined, I lost this class as far as interest is concerned. I was flexible with it, whether it was a half-year or a full-year. INVEST is a program, a national program, stands for Insurance Vocational Education Student Training, and I worked with area insurance agents, agencies and businesses. And we just incorporated a lot of important skills. The business people would come in and talk to the classes. We would take field trips and go to the businesses and, you know, they, they show us around, they feed us lunch. Students had to, you know, dress appropriately and act professional and that kind of stuff. So it was an opportunity for them to kind of, you know, rub elbows with some, with people in the community. So we did put it on the list this year, but there, there wasn't any interest for this either. So I miss this, we used to, we used to work with other schools as well, students from other schools. We would get together and do seminars and things like that. So that, and that could have some college credits. It did when, when I taught it a few years back. Leadership in Action, again, pretty flexible. It's usually a semester class, but if a student is really interested, they could stay the full year. Neil Dorish and I co-teach this. Students learn how to plan and implement events for various, whether it's school spirit, community service, public awareness. We kind of go through a specific project planning model with them and they organize projects for, again, for the school, raise money for certain activities. Here's just some examples. The last couple of years, on Valentine's Day, the students cut out hearts, construction paper hearts and put every student in the school's name on there, as well as faculty and staff, you know, cafeteria workers, custodial staff, everybody, and then put them all around the school. We, one year we collected items for the SBCA and then we took a field trip up there. They showed us around and that was, that was fun. One, one year we just, it was just, they just, whoops, oh, I want to go ahead. Pay it forward kind of a thing and they just took names, we put the kids' names in a hat in different grades, I think, if I remember correctly. They just pulled it out and they just put a little special note with a candy bar and they deliver it to a student in class, just say, we're thinking about you, you know, you're special, just something as simple as that. Of course, the annual, there I go again. The annual elementary school carnival, Leadership in Action does. We're deep into the planning of that right now. It's going to happen in a couple of weeks. Couple of weeks. We, we host the college freshman panel where we invite graduates to come back and talk to the students, what's it like being a freshman in college? What are you experiencing? What, you know, that kind of thing. And we've had like the English classes come to the library and set up in the panel. And that's, that's pretty popular. This, those are graduates. So we had quite a few this year. I had one group this year who wanted to make Rice Krispie treats for St. Patrick's Day in the shape of, yes, cookies and green. And, oh boy, was that for everybody in the school. Put them on a stick. That was interesting. I think cafeteria ladies were very patient with us. But they did it and they handed them all out to everybody. And of course, the bottom was the Wizards game this year. Harlem Wizards, our group organized that as well. So those are some, some things that happen with, with Leadership in Action. It's a very different class, very informal, you know, there's certain, you know, they have journal entries each week they have to do. They have community service each, each marking period. They have to get five hours of community service. Can be pretty tricky at times, but we've got some that are, they're going to come over to the elementary school and help out with some things, so. And of course, all the track meets that are coming up here, the students can get some community service there as well. So that's, it's a pretty popular course. I teach sports marketing. It's a half-year course. Of course, sport management, sports marketing, it's a pretty popular field of study in our area, local colleges, Ethic College, TC3 as well as SUNY Cortland. And so they learn about the sports industry, the history, you know, impact of the, on the economy. They create their own dream team where they create a sporting team and we go through the whole process of, you know, what's involved with that and, and do all kinds of marketing aspects to that. Again, they're getting a lot of computer information and background when, as we go through the different sports. They get very, that, because we're, they're into their dream team now and it's, you know, we made up a season's schedule and, you know, one, one team is going to play the other team and, you know, it's very, they, they put themselves right into that mode of, this is my team, you know, made up of different sports, basketball, football, whatever it happens to be. So they get a little excited about that. These are, there's soft skills in there, real-life skills that I incorporate into all the classes in some way, shape or form. And, you know, sometimes some of these get lost. I think one of the big ones now that I'm finding is getting lost is the communication part. You know, it's, it's difficult for a student, you know, if, if we're visiting and we're confirming that we're going and I ask a student to make that phone call, very, very difficult for them to pick up the phone and talk to someone on the other end of the phone, let alone, you know, when you're meeting someone, shaking their hands and talking to them face to face. That's, we're, or, you know, the whole, whole screenagers syndrome that we're kind of in. So, you know, trying to get them to understand some of these things that, in different ways. Like I said, I incorporate, I try to, in my classroom, make it more of, instead of a teacher-student, kind of an employer-employee relationship so that they, you know, it can be a little informal, but you still got to get the work done, kind of a thing. And, and sometimes freshmen have a little bit of a hard time to start out with, but once they get into the routine, you know, they get it. They, they understand, so. Goals for the future for the business department. I always love to see my enrollment increase. You know, I, I feel like a lot of the students, like we had already mentioned, need some of, of these concepts that I teach and have taught for so many years. Increasing soft skills for the students to, to be able to go out and be successful, even though a lot of the jobs now are different than they used to be, but we still do have some jobs that, all those are important. You know, I'd kind of like to see, having lost the INVEST class, we used to go and go to some seminars with other students from other schools on various topics. So, you know, I'd like to see us here at the, at the high school level, maybe do some seminars on career, on college, on life skills, maybe short, somehow incorporate it, Lord knows how, into our schedule, but, you know, so that more kids can get some of these ideas and information along the way. So those are some of the things that, that I'm sort of thinking about. Questions?
That's a lot. What would be involved in making some of these courses mandatory?
So, we've talked about, I mean, this is, this has always been a highly debated topic. The, the challenge is, is that I could say that there's courses in almost every content that you can make a justification for being mandatory, like increasing our health, more health credits. CAD is one that, there's so many careers, there's so many fields that people use CAD in. I would say CAD would be one that every kid should take, DDP. So I think it's just that there's so much electives that we offer. To pick one or two and say that these are going to be mandatory for everybody changes the dynamics for so many other things. It's just, it would be difficult. And our, and our kids are taking so much as it is that when you have kids that are taking full solid schedules and not eating lunch their entire way through high school and not, and still not getting everything that they want to take.
On the flip side, I'm going to play the double advocate here. I have, I have a senior in my Leadership in Action class. Leadership in Action is fifth period. It's his first class of the day.
Oops.
Okay, after my class, he has a lunch release for a couple of periods and then comes back. So there's a part of me that says, you know, this late entry, lunch release, early release at the end of the day, you know, some of those kids could be here taking a course from Jim, taking a course from me, but, you know, you can't, you can't shove it down their throats. It's something that, you know, that they have to realize. And, you know, this particular student is going to TC3, but no matter where, you know, I'm a little nervous that, you know, he's, he's not going to have the base that he should have when he, when he gets there, especially this, you know, how to come in when you want kind of thing.
Have you been on the other side of having employees come in who haven't had this?
Yeah.
That then they have to take the time or they're not particularly successful? And it's always sort of startled me a little bit that they focus on the academics, but it's the interpersonal dynamics of working in
Right.
an environment where there's so much variation and it's, it's not high school, although they can turn it into high school. So, yeah, I, you know, from a perspective employer, this kind of stuff I think is really important, let alone to the individual development as people.
Yes.
I mean, these soft skills are applicable right across the board.
One of the things that we have done in the past is we, we increased about five years ago, we increased the number of courses that you had to take as a senior. It used to be that kids were allowed to be a senior and only take four and a half credits, which is less than a half a day. And we increased that to five and a half. That one extra credit is, was a significant bump. But again, that's the kind of thing, I, I think that it's, it is definitely worth having a conversation and saying, you know, as a senior, you need to take a minimum of six and a half credits or six credits to be a full-time student. But five and a half is, was determined based on the fact that you need twenty-two credits in order to graduate. You can, if you earn five and a half credits every year, that makes you a full-time student, gets everything you need in order to graduate. But that is the minimum. Most of our students enter their senior year needing two and a half credits. Most kids, if you are, if you are on track and doing everything, you need to take freshman, sophomore, junior year, you enter your senior year and the only courses that you're actually required to take are English, social studies and phys ed. That's based on New York. So they're coming in and taking two and a half credits their senior year and we're requiring them to take five and a half. So we're already making them to pick up three additional courses their senior year so that we can say that they're legitimately a full-time student.
I don't know how you change that mindset of the numbers, the numbers. It's not the numbers, it's
Right.
take advantage of getting this information that you don't have to pay for right now.
Exactly.
Before your next year when you have to pay for it. I mean, I remember
And when you pay for it, you're not only paying for it monetarily, you're going to be for it in other ways. Not being particularly successful when you're first took a couple of jobs.
I remember with, with my two kids in junior year, you know, we did the college visits and I remember the places that we visited, you know, explicitly said, don't go light on your senior year. And so, you know, my kids didn't get the, no late entry, no lunch release, no early release, you know, fill up, you know, and I, and I had a son who was, you know, he, God bless him because he's a police officer today, but he, you know, wasn't really academically high, but his senior year, he took a couple AP classes. You know, we said, hey, listen, you don't have to ace them at all. Just get that, you know, feel for them and, and he did and he loved them. And so, you know, I just, I think to get away from that number, that I have to have this many to graduate, this many credits, I don't know how you get past that, you know. I don't know. And talking to parents as well and saying, you know, these courses are here, have your kids take advantage of them. I don't, I don't know how we do it, but.
Well, the, the presentation that I have scheduled later on is about that idea of college credit. And when you look at the amount of college credits that our kids are getting, despite the fact that our enrollment is declining, the percentages of kids getting college credit is increasing. And a lot of that is because of the work that Karen and Jim do because they're two big sellers in terms of our elective credits. You'll see in the data that I'm going to share later, and I think you may have seen it, I don't know if I got email out to folks yet, but we have more kids across the board earning college credit. This year, more than ever before. This year's senior class, we had eighty-seven percent of the kids earned some college credit. And the reason that we're getting so many kids college credit is because we're offering such diversity. For a school our size, if you, again, I will brag, but if you go to any other school, even remotely even remotely close to the size of our school, even schools that are sometimes, in many cases, much bigger than us, there is no school district, I would, I would challenge anyone who finds a school district in New York State where kids are getting as much college credit as the students are in Truismberg. Ithaca High School, not even close to the percentages that we have in terms of the amount of college credit that kids are getting. Not even close. So, to have, but the reason that we're so successful at that is because of the willingness of the teachers, because in order to have a class be college credit, they have to go to TC three, they have to do the paperwork-
They have to be credentialed.
They have to be credentialed, they have to do a syllabus every year that gets approved and is aligned with the curriculum that they're teaching there. I mean, as Karen's courses, you'll see that Karen's courses have had to evolve every year, because business and technology classes don't remain stagnant. Period. They just don't.
Well, TC three said, "You're going to have to move to Office two thousand thirteen."
Yeah.
We need a credit less, you know?
So, so, I, I, I mean, just, I guess, I'll, I'll talk more about this stuff later and I'll pass the data out so people can see it, but I, I really want to say publicly the amount of work that these two individuals do to give our kids a diverse program, because it would be really easy, and we could justify their positions by just offering one or two simple, like, these are the two business classes that we offer and push lots of kids into them, but, I mean, how many different courses do you prep for every day? Four, five? Every day?
Six with my independent studies.
Right. Jim's teaching five different classes over the course of the year, and maintaining lab spaces, Karen's maintaining a computer lab, and we give them forty minutes of prep time, and I will tell you for a fact, go see what they're doing during their prep time, and I guarantee you that every single day there's kids in there, and they're working with kids. So, it is, it goes well beyond the workday of a teacher. These two people are, are two people who just need to be commended for the sheer volume of work that they are willing to do to make sure that this school, and this is why Truismberg is what it is, because there are, to, to be able to offer the number of electives that we offer, it would be really easy to just go, you know, we're just going to offer DDP and CAD, and that's it. But, every year Jim says, "Let's put more out on the course selection sheet, see what the kids want to take, let's give them a chance." The Maker class that he just is, is starting next year, I think has over forty kids signed up for next year. Forty kids. And that's, so that is-
Good luck for your special.
But, but that's what they do, because part of their business is sales, making sure that their, the programs they're offering are aligned with what the kids are interested in, getting kids interested and passionate about what they're doing, and getting kids enrolled in those classes.
But, given one of our main goals is to really try to have our children college and career ready, these two departments are absolutely necessary.
Well, what's the, what's the number one major in college? Uh, major, Karen? Business. The number one major in college is business, across the United States. We have to offer this. These are amazing things. With these guys, we have two incredible staff numbers here.
Thank you very much. And now I want to take one of your courses now.
Josh, can you put the lights on?
Yeah.
And this just in the modified baseball team beat glancing.
Wow! Excellent. Okay, moving on. Do we have anything regarding Karen Scott Hill? Is there any lunch committee reports?
Yes, sir.
Very quickly, if you will notice, you have received any number? Policy reviews? These, this is part of what we've been doing for, during the year, is being able to review policies that actually have not been looked at. Most of these are from two thousand and six to seven, and while there have been no changes, it's important that we actually take a look at them, make sure there, there shouldn't be any changes. And given the fact that we're also going to have two new board members, I thought it would be a good idea if we had a chance to be able to review, because this, these policies still pretty sedentary with board function. So, if you would take, and it shouldn't take much time to go through them. Would like a motion for a first reading?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Nice, light reading, bedtime reading.
Did those, is there a PDF or something like that that's going on with all of those? I said that there's a link. Oh, a syllabus. Yeah. Sorry.
I have a, in fact, Michael has a copy, but I'll, I'll make a copy of, of a list of all the policies
Inventory.
And the, and the dates as to when they were
Adopted.
Adopted?
Yeah.
So that we can keep an eye on, you know, you have, you know, you couldn't have to go to off the, for that looking at them.
It'd be nice to get printed copies. I know that they'll be happy with those. Don't need to make people's copies. Um, I was thinking about for these, for these-
Well, they're available on, through the website.
On the website?
Yeah. I think it's personal preference. We used to print a lot, and we don't print so much anymore. It's about a six hundred page document.
The finders. Yeah. Maybe we could, I remember we were talking about going through some, just for, as far as the basics, if we could choose the fifteen most important policies that impact board work, or, you know, a forum, for instance, knowing the basics. That's, that's-
That is, it's all in there.
Okay, cool.
Right. And the idea of, certainly you can have printed copies for it, but Douglas, my files have printed copies of board policies, it's about that big at this point.
Yeah.
Add it to their six inches over here. So, it's really, if, if you can do it to keep them on, on your computer, it is, is a lot more efficient, and you can do a word search and find them a lot faster.
Yeah. I can't believe I'm asking for a printed copy.
No.
I mean, I'm more, I'm a paper copy.
Of the entire split?
Yeah. Of the whole ballot. Well, once we, once we approve them, Michael can do it. Once, once the-
We can make them, it's just if you want them.
Right.
It takes a, it's a printing job.
Yeah. Let's talk.
Yeah, we can talk at the next meeting and, and sort of figure out what the best applications way it would be to be able to talk to people today.
Or, maybe.
You can just, you can put them all on your computer, you can load them all right on your computer.
Right. Could put a sunblock, you know, like here. Okay. Just a break. Yeah.
Okay, moving on to the facilities committee. And Michael, did you-
Yeah, we'll, we'll launch the facilities committee met about a week and four days ago with Hunt, and just an ongoing conversation for a while. We were meeting, having open forums for the public, and as we got close to the budget and the superintendent selection process, we just said, "Nope, we're going to put that on the back burner." Well, now it's time to get it off the back burner, and the, after a really long and in-depth conversation about all of our, all of our options, we acknowledged that the community survey, which is just one input instrument, is favoring options one and six, with option one being, I'm just going to describe it in brief terms, the remodel and add stem to everything option, and I'm going to say it's over thirty million dollars. That option is actually leading in the community survey. Option six is a second place to that, and then option five is not as, as favorable. However, ever since the December fifth consultant report, we have continued to work with option five, and every time we work with it, it, it gains more acceptance, and so the consensus, I believe, of the committee was to take one last look at option five and fix music, that's the thing that needs to be fixed, and, and to look at option five in terms of increasing renovation space and decreasing new space, and seeing if we can get the tax impact down. And on top of that, Kimberly has identified a possibility of perhaps getting to about six point five million dollars in a capital reserve by the time we need it. So, all those things considered, take option five fixed up and analyzed for more renovation and less new construction, which, which increases building aid units, and option one to SED this summer, see what comes back. And then the board will have some time before what really turns out to be September eleventh is like, yeah, it has to be decided if there's going to be a December vote. But, once we get the report back from SED, we can take a look at, you know, the board can take a look at all the options and kind of retake the polls. We'll have new board members who will have, you know, new opinions and thoughts and perspectives, and, and then, and the options at that time will be to either move forward with one option or the other for a December vote, or you could let it go until perhaps March, which would give you about another ninety day window in the fall to consider the options. Does that capture it?
That captures it perfectly, I think. Joe was there, John was there.
Yeah, and I can, just a little thing that gave me hope is Joe's comments about music. Do you want to just speak to that just briefly, because it's come up every time we presented option five, it's like, whoa, what are you going to do about music?
Yeah, I mean, I talked to Jeannie a little bit about the elementary school, I talked to Josh, I'm going regularly about middle school and stuff. I met with Jeff from Hunt today, and we feel really confident that we can accommodate the music program and with very little disturbance to where we're at with the, with the plan. We even talked about maybe just a different layout than what we currently have to make the flow through the buildings better, because in addition to music, you have the separation of the middle school and the high school that is a recurrent issue.
Yeah.
So, we talked a little bit about even making that tighter, and how can we improve that? So, you know, what I, the takeaway from today is that he's going to work on getting the music program needs taken care of, and then we're going to try and reduce some square footage, you know, for the addition, just by designing smarter. So, I talked to him about some of the wasted space that I saw, and he agreed, and so we may, we're making, we're tweaking it now. And, again, it's all conceptual, so when we actually start to design things in hopefully January, then we'll start to drill in on actual square foot and, you know, I'm missing that, but, you know, we had, he and I had a really good brainstorming session today, and we even have some creative thoughts for, you know, how we fund it and different things, so.
Yep. A related topic is the Hamilton Square development and the possible impact on our, our enrollment. Sarah attended a meeting and sent some information, and then-
It was tomorrow night as well.
Yep. Kimberly and Joe and I attended a meeting with Matt Johnston, the village planner, and asked him every question we could think of, and, and part of that conversation was, you know, like, how many students do we think? And between what Sarah sent off to you and two additional conversations, we, we've agreed, it's like between forty and sixty new students. Some will come from, some will be our own students moving, so that wouldn't add, some will come from outside, but overall, about forty to sixty. I also checked with Bill Silke, one of our consultants from the Fall, because he's done a lot of work, and he agreed that they'll, basically forty to sixty students for that size of development. So, the question comes, like, do we have room for forty to sixty more students? And in the context of what Joe just said, we may do some things with square footage, but we will have the same number of classrooms and option whatever, you can just fill in whatever blank you want to fill in. We're not reducing classroom, numbers of classrooms regardless of what we do, so if anyone is asked, and we will be asked, does the school district have the capacity? We absolutely do have the capacity for forty to sixty more students. One comment was made, Jeannie said, "Well, if they're all precarious, you know, that's a whole nother." A wonderful problem to have, but they don't tend to come like that, so. But, but, but overall, we have the capacity for the new students from that development, and it's a couple of years away at least, so.
Well, it's what, about an average of five kids per class. Now, of course, it'll, it won't play out that way, but.
Well, I'm guessing they, they would clump up in the younger grades, I'm just guessing.
It's not like doubling our population.
Yeah.
It's not like doubling our population.
You know, it's, it's where people are adding their lives with younger children, first homes or early second homes, whatever. So, overall, there's just consensus that it'll be about forty to sixty new students potential.
Even if they ended up all in the same building-
We still have the capacity.
I mean, it's not nearly what those buildings were, had as capacity
That's right.
Eight or nine years ago, so.
Yep.
Should be able, as long as they don't all end up in one grade level. Or two grade levels.
Another question that came up related to that, and I'll let Kimberly speak to it, is about the tax impact, because people talk about, like, well, what happens if there's affordable housing mixed in there? Do you want to speak to that?
And so, really, all it does is it adds to the full value assessment, which really means it generates more opportunity to collect, what we put out is the levy, so if anything, it may lower taxes.
Yeah, it's not taxes on property, so.
No, no.
Taxes will-
So, I can go to use goods all these days.
It's a good thing.
Well, that's, it's one of ours.
So, the plan is, without really too much, I think, process, to have Hunt take two plans forward to SED this summer, and we'll keep informed when they come back. That'll be a big moment, let's see what they say.
Yeah.
Okay. That was, do you have anything for us?
Just really briefly, I'll just mention a couple of things. From Bosse's, we are really excited about the new sports program, we're going to be sports management program, we're going to be offering, it includes massage and a couple of other things as well, and enrollment, it looks as if enrollment in that section next year is going to be huge, so everyone's very excited about that. And of course, graduations and all are coming up, and they're, I think they're about five different graduations. As terms of Central New York, we're, we're looking very closely at our relationship with MAGNY, which is the Manufacturing Association of Central New York. They're just getting larger and larger, more and more manufacturers are joining, and businesses are joining in, and I think eventually we may be formalizing some sort of a relationship. It's a way of getting, not perhaps so much for us at this end of the world, but certainly for those closer to Syracuse, getting internships easily, developing relationships that will lead to internships. They're very interested in, in working with us, and have given a number of workshops for us, and it's, I think it's going to prove to be a very wonderful relationship. So, we're quite excited about doing a little more with them, maybe having someone come in when we have meetings so that they have something to go back and report on.
Administrator's report.
John's been teasing us with this all week, so I mean, let's have the whole thing.
Just pass this down to you.
We have you, Mr. Fur, talking to us about dual credit enrollment.
Yeah? This is great. We're just going to see the conversation.
Oh, okay.
So, I, I just, every year I get an annual report from TC three that shares how our senior class fared in terms of earning college credit. This year, the, the credits ranged from three at a minimum to, I think we had a student with fifty-six credits at the max. But, this, this graph, what I want to just point out to you is if you look at those, that graph, you can see that every line's going up with the exception of those earning forty-five credits or more. To me, what this represents is that we have really done a good job of broadening our offerings. Every, there are TC three concurrent enrollment credits available in every single academic department in the building. So, the number of kids that got some credit has gone up to eighty-seven percent, and that's the highest it's been since I've been keeping track of it, since I've been here, starting with the class of two thousand and eleven. You know, it's, the, the previous high was eighty-one percent with the class of two thousand and fourteen. So, to, to have that, that level of growth in terms of, is, is pretty exciting to me. The other, the other point here would be to see that, that idea that more than half of the students, of fifty-six percent, have earned at least a full semester of college credit. Twenty, we're up to thirty percent now earning a full year of college credit. Again, two thousand and fourteen was our previous high at twenty-five percent, so when you just look at that trend continuing to grow, again, Jim's presentation had included two classes that, until last year, didn't offer college credit, but Jim took, took on the extra work, communicated with TC three, got that credit approval. Our, our teacher, Alan Pennick, has added a couple of courses that, that are college credit this year. I know Ryan Radley added TC three credit for his EP Environmental Science course. My language teachers right now are, have a summer project where they're trying to get- I know Ryan Radley added TC3 credit for his EP Environmental Science course. My language teachers right now are, have a summer project where they're trying to get TC3 credit added for our Level 3 or Level 4, depending on what they can get approved for. So again, it just continually expands the offerings for our kids. And the great thing about our program is, is that our kids are taking advantage of these things. All of those classes that you saw, there's not a single class that those teachers talked about tonight that's required for a student to take in order to graduate. They do need our credit. That DDP class that Jim offers is one of several ways that a student can earn that credit. But there's not a single one of those classes that students are required to take. And yet, I'm filling all of their classes and more, and have to cancel classes because we don't have a teacher to teach them. That's an awesome problem for us to have. It's really exciting that our kids are interested in taking a diverse program and getting a little bit of everything, you know. That's why I struggle with that idea of making something required, because for everything that you require is something else that then they might not take or can't take.
And it can get strongly recommended, though.
Yes. And that's where our counselors, I mean, that's the work that our counselors are doing, is trying to encourage kids to take courses that will make their senior year meaningful and prep them for what they want to do next.
I think it's very individualized, though, because some students could grasp some of that information based on, you know, their family situation, and we wouldn't want to force a student into taking one of those courses and then exclude them from maybe an AP art class if they plan to go on and major in art or something.
I should help them to opt out.
So I can see both sides of it, you know, from test out.
It's a change.
So it's just, it's really good news to me, that we're doing, we're doing what we wanted to do, which is to increase this opportunity, get more kids taking advantage of this, and it's working.
If I could do it again, I would have gone with TC3 first, saved money. And I'm wondering if there's an increase in enrollment, just because they're like, well, I already got a year done, I might as well go do another year and then go to a fourth year.
Well, that goes to the, the whole premise of what we do, so there's, when our students graduate, many of them will, like, almost all of them will have some level of college credit. We also have kids that will take AP classes and take the Associate AP exam. And then depending on where you go to college, the college will, some colleges will take AP credit as college credit and transfer that in. Some colleges will take these as SUNY credits, and depending on where you go, again, the SUNY schools are most likely to take these credits. So, I mean, what, Madison was our one who got the, I mean, she had 60, over 60 credits when she graduated.
Yeah, so she had 64, she went to a private university, and she's a science major. So we did learn that, and I think this is true of most colleges, that if you're a science major and you've taken college level in high school, you'll repeat those courses at the university, is just an expectation. So, you know, many of them transferred, a lot of them were elective credits, but again, because she's a science major, she doesn't really have elective credits. So I think if she had gone to a SUNY school, it probably would have paid off in volumes faster, but it was her preference, and so she's happy where she's at, and
And that's what I hear when we talk to the kids that come back. Depend, it really is completely dependent on where you're going to school and what you're majoring in and how much they'll take. Because I've had kids that have gone to school and they'll start their freshman year as a sophomore, which is really cool, because that gives you the advantage of being able to register for classes earlier, more selection, more opportunities in terms of housing, better parking. I mean, there's just advantages that you have by going into college as a sophomore. Again, my, my daughter's a junior, and I know that she'll, I mean, at the end of this year, she's already surpassing the, the full year credit, because you get eight credits for college chemistry, you get eight credits for college physics, she's got credits for AP USS. I mean, you, after your junior year, I mean, we've got kids that are, they're going to walk out of here as a college sophomore.
And I think even if they enter at that level and they do have to repeat the sciences, they still have a better foundation than those students that didn't have it.
Yes.
For sure. They're sound.
Having had taken college chemistry and then taking a college chemistry course at college, you just, the level of confidence that you have going into that class, which so often you hear kids coming back going, oh, everything was great except for college chemistry. So, I mean, it is, it's just really great to hear, because the feedback that we get is all positive.
But for the concurrently enrolled courses, TC3 will take them.
Yes.
So
Yes.
I'm, I'm curious if more students are choosing to start at TC3 right after college, because it's like
I don't get that, I think, it, it does, it does, I think more kids will consider SUNY, because TC3 is part of the SUNY program, so the SUNY schools are more likely to accept those credits. And given all the things that are going on in New York State around SUNY, and funding and tuition, there's a lot, there's a lot of kids thinking a lot harder, learning harder about SUNY programs.
And keep in mind, our students are taking these, a lot of them as elective, based on their interests.
Right.
So when you go to TC3, there's a prescribed formula of courses that you need to take. So even though our students may have over 30 college credits, they might not fall in the right boxes for them to actually, you know, count toward a degree. Some of them absolutely will, but not all of them.
But what's great is, is that when you look at the number of kids that are getting more and more credit, I mean, even this 30% of kids that's getting, you know, over 30 credits, but when you look at the kids who are, we have kids that are getting 45, 50 credits. If they choose to go, even during the summer, you could take a couple of classes during summer, and as Madison did, and walk out with an associate's degree before you graduate. It's not something that
Not really the summer, though, it was for two years.
It's prescribed, there, again, and that's, as Kimberly's saying, there are prescribed classes that you have to take, so you can't just take everything that we offer, because we actually offer much more than 60 credits. If you took every single course that we offer that's concurrent enrollment, it's something in the high 70s, I think, if my last count. But even if you take every single thing that we offer, it wouldn't get you an associate's degree because you didn't get
You didn't take a right
There's, there's that one extra course that we just don't offer, or it's a course that you need to get there. But, but getting kids closer, so that if they want to do that, they can do it.
Certainly great options.
I think it's just another exclamation point on the statement that Truman'sburg offers a rich, rich variety of really quality coursework to our students, all the way through, from Jeannie to, to the elementary school, through the middle school. And you saw, you know, with technology tonight, you know, all those things they're doing is 56, 7, they've created a technology. They just had their kid president thing last week, so there's just a lot of things happening for our students, all the way through the district.
Yeah, the piece that I would, I would, my concluding statement would be, the reason that this happens is because the teachers are willing to do it.
Yeah.
There is nothing in our contract that allows me to force a teacher to get their class signed up for college, college credit. They do this completely voluntarily, of their own, it's their own work, there's no bonus pay for teaching it as a concurrent enrollment class, they don't get any perks for doing it, other than simply being able to say that this is a college course. And so the work that goes into it, in the initial phase, is actually pretty substantial, the paperwork that has to go in to get the course, to get the teacher approved to, to teach it. And we have had staff that have been denied, just because they don't have the appropriate degrees or background to teach the course, even though they've been teaching in here for seven, eight years. So it's not, it's not just a, you know, check off a couple of boxes and mail in a, in a program. I mean, it's, it's pretty substantial to get that approval. And then once you have it, you have to sustain it. And so this is work that our teachers are doing above and beyond what we, what they have to do.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's what makes Diver great.
It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will finish the student report, unless there's something to add you want to fill in?
I would just make sure everybody's got graduation on your calendars. It's Thursday, June 22nd, 6:00 PM, up at the stadium, assuming the weather is beautiful.
Planning.
But the weather will be beautiful. Beautiful, it will, it will be a beautiful night. I'm expecting 73 degrees and sunshine.
Yes. Joe will go for low humidity also.
Okay. Why not? Moving on, anything you would change with the extension? Right now, continue the motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post or extensions? Motion carried. Check several pages. The new business. I need a motion to allow our district focus to send out letters for continuing unemployment.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion or comments or questions?
Is this basically so people can collect unemployment over the summer?
We need to provide reasonable assurance that they have a position to return to in the fall. Without that, they are eligible for unemployment.
Stayed up till what, 1938 or something?
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was some labor decision in 1938 that impacts our lives today. It's actually, it's actually a, a letter that kind of creates panic in employees because of how it has to be worded, so I'm going to place a panic memo on top of it this year, and hopefully it will keep, keep everybody calm. That's my call.
Okay, all in favor? Any post or extensions? Okay. Next item is approval for the summer curriculum project, which we have Several points, right?
You have a lot, probably, what, a thousand hours? Yeah. This, with approval of the new TTA contract, which will spread throughout the year, but for right now, we're approving summer. The leadership team reviewed it, Kimberly gave us our guidelines for funding, and they're in alignment. We had lots of conversations about STEM and project-based learning and special education, and all the work in the district that makes it better for students and for teaching. A lot of it happens in these summer curriculum projects. So it's a really good thing that Truman'sburg does.
Okay. Thank you. A motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you. Teachers.
Everybody agree on?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post or extensions? Moving on to the second of the meeting, the open forum. So anybody have any comments or questions, or? I guess not? Okay. A report forum with we, we, we hardly few here.
You're the 18th.
I would just like to comment that I really enjoyed the script from the two discussions we had at the last meeting, that, that I appreciate the fact that he collected all of that, and
That's nice, because Mrs. Lincoln spends a lot of time listening to that tape.
I, I'm sure she did, I'm sorry.
I thought it was
I'm sorry, maybe I didn't like it.
No, it was, it was worth it.
But it, I really, it was helpful to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, it really was, thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, any other comments? Something to descend to say? Once again, welcome, guys.
Yeah.
And I'm lucky to I've already assured Gary that being the only person of the male persuasion sitting on this board, that we won't be too hard on.
That sounds true.
That's a sexist comment already, too.
Get me home, send that here again.
Okay, please, a motion to adjourn to an executive meeting, and this is regarding matters relating to collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14, which is
So moved.
Okay, second.